Okay, this is nine o'clock on Monday, January 14th, 2019. And I called by County District School to order. Today we have Jean St. John from Adams Street, Judge Cross. Please stand your next standing.
For the first time this year, Lord, we meet in these chambers to deal with the day-to-day business of running a county. Today, we've got to address a host of issues to get this new year up and going. Running a high-population county like ours can be attached to conflicts for any one of us to handle. So we stand in awe, Lord, when we realize that all alone each day, you face the task of running a world. While we worry today about the traffic flow and half a dozen roads, you must regulate the flow of all your creatures, even in the most obscure corners of the planet. While we try to control the use of a few acres of developed land, you must tame tsunamis, dampen volcanoes, irrigate deserts, and protect Arkansas Shiners. While we budget funds for signs and lights and parking stripes, you must make sure each day that the sun shines bright and the tides rise on time and each star stays put in its place. And you do all of this effortlessly, Lord, and you do it well. Compared to running a world, Lord, running our county looks like a rugby assignment, but it's about all we can handle. Thank you for the talented people who make it run right. Bless all of us, Lord, that our own best efforts in this new year will be enhanced by your incredible wisdom and grace in the name of your Son, who makes every day and everything run right. Amen.
We're the President's District Court of the United States of America and to the requirement for which he stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas Department, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one open and visible.
First, we'll need to draw a list of the issues of the minutes from December 26th, 2018, and December 27th. And number two is Budget Minister Consider and Act Upon Approving Budget Minutes. This is what we were going to do. Budget Minutes.
I'm going to approve the Budget Minutes as presented. Second.
Vouchers to Consider and Act Upon the Footwell of the Paying of Vouchers process at the County Attorney's Office for the period of December 19th, 2018 through January 9th, 2019. Check numbers 1-83844 through 1-84061 and wire transfers 1177 through 1185, meaning an amount of $2,198,028.1 cents.
To approve the State Department of County Judge for checks 1-83844 through 1-84061 and wire 1177 through 1185, meaning $188,028.1 cents.
A motion and second, I'll favor, please.
Judge, if I may, go back to Budget.
It's not the first one, current law, number one. I don't agree with how it was done. It's not me against the current judges in there, I just don't agree with the language of the word. Number four, interest report to recognize insurance bond report.
Good morning. There's nothing as usual on insurance report this morning.
Those claims, yeah, yeah.
Well, we are beginning to see some of the claims on one of the newborns.
So recognizing the file, Wellness Committee to hear a report and recommendation from Wellness Committee on the full wellness strategy, if that any action necessary.
On December the 5th, we had a Wellness Committee meeting and nine members were present. We had Julie Reitman with Holmes Murphy and Kathy Hattiford with Texas Association of Counties also present at that meeting. We talked about a variety of options for a wellness strategy for the future for product counting. And I have Julie Reitman here, who has a presentation for the court on that recommendation.
Good morning, Julie, we're going with Holmes Murphy. Nice to be able to talk this morning. So as Kay said, we really wanted to go into a lot of detail, want to talk to Wellness Committee, you know, the reasons why, looking at programs that we are, we obviously, we were talking about wellness. When we look at our claims, the claims are where it really drives how the plan is running. So we have higher claims, we end up with higher premiums, we have lesser benefits for employees, those issues with budget. And so when we're looking at this, we're trying to figure out ways to, again, mitigate costs in the long term. And so we looked at data and went through some additional information with the committee about how your spend has been over the last couple of years. And when we're looking at things like disease, like respiratory system, of the circulatory system, muscular skeletal, which are always big dollar spends, and trying to find ways to encourage members to have better outcomes of their disease states by going through programming and maybe finding the right way to get care. And so we have talked through this quite a bit, just to give a good understanding of what your spend is currently and maybe those things that we can affect and have better outcomes and lower costs for in the future. And ask for really wellness programming coming into place. When we look at your current medical spend, when we look at chronic conditions, and so those are going to patients like your coronary artery disease, hypertension, diabetes, you had across 351 members, a little over $3 million in spend for those things. And these are things that can be definitely helped through medications, through conversation with your doctors. The idea behind what we're trying to do is maybe find these things that where they become issues. People are always wanting to have issues as far as, you know, high blood pressure and diabetes, but, you know, making sure that you have a primary care relationship and talking to your doctor on a regular basis to treat things ahead of time or just keep them contained. We look at hyperlipidemia, so you're high cholesterol, you have 147 members, a little over $1 million for the spend. And then asthma, almost $500,000 for the spend over 16 members. And these numbers are important to note, are those people that actually seen doctors. And so we have a lot of your population who hasn't been to a doctor and don't actually know what their chronic conditions are and aren't getting treatment. And so what ends up happening with those folks that aren't seeing a physician is that if they have catastrophic event, they don't know that they have high blood pressure, they don't know that they have diabetes, they end up having a catastrophic event. For them, it's very detrimental. I mean, you're looking at, you know, having a heart attack and spending time in hospital. Through their plan, you're also looking at some additional spending that might be able to be treated ahead of time for your folks. And so I ran wellness programs for another county, and so I wanted to go over some information about another county that's very singularly sized to you and give you an idea of how this program had kind of worked. And so for this one, we started their program in 2011. And so bringing up what I'm looking at right now, if you're looking at some of their high cost payments in 2011, you're not going to go into a ton of detail on this. And then looking at their high cost payments in 2018, this kind of gives you an idea of what that spend is. But really what I wanted to point out is what was different between 2011 and 2018. And when you look at the ones in red, so diabetes, heart disease, complications, and chest pains, we're looking at those versus what we have now. And what we have now is cancers, injuries, and poisoning of muscular skeletal. So what we've done over the last seven years with the Wellness Program is gotten rid of those high cost payments due to things that are treatable and preventable. And now we're going to start focusing, then specifically on muscular skeletal, which I know we've talked through TAC, they actually have TAC as well, which has a new muscular skeletal program that's been introduced for this year, and cancer for them. But if you look again for their chronic conditions, we don't have those high cost payments anymore. And I know only showing 2011 and 2018, but from 2013 to 2018, we kept the high cost payments on this list down to even more catastrophic amounts.
And that was, presumably, because the intended purpose to, you know, physical patient having physical rules?
Absolutely. Yeah, so this Wellness Program is going to be very similar to what they started with as well, that we're proposing for you all today. So what we did with them is we started off saying, let's go ahead and start with these steps and then progress your program from there. And really, the idea is to have folks know their numbers. You know, you go in, you go to your doctor, have a relationship with your primary care physician. If your doctor knows who you are, and you go in and they see your results year over year and understand what's going on with you, that's going to help you in the long run. And what we saw was, with them specifically, there's a drop in cancer claims. And that's partly because when you go in and you see your doctor every year, and let's say this time I go to my doctor today, you know, here's my blood work, but also, I think they'll really run down like the end of the Bruce Fonte Way. Those are things that you wouldn't necessarily know to look for if you don't have those conversations. We've seen a 57% drop in circulatory claims with them, and a 39% drop in digestive claims, which, you know, it seems like something that might not be high dollars, but those medications for digestive, it's kind of expensive. And so this is just all really attributed to adding in those Wellness Program and trying to get people a little bit more aware of what's going on with their own personal health. You know, one of the things that we've always pointed out is early infection equals lower costs, but better outcomes. And so, you know, cost is great, and we certainly want to save the county money, but the reality is, if we catch someone with cancer early on, it's going to be a whole lot easier for them than if you catch it when it's, you know, fully into our stages. You catch someone with diabetes, maybe before, pre-diabetes, that's a much easier path for someone health-wise to be able to go along than when they're actually become fully diabetic and have to wear medications and treatments and all the complications that come with that. So really, the idea behind the Wellness Program is not just to save the county money, which will ultimately save employees, you know, money themselves and keep their plans solid, but also, I mean, for your employees and your members on your plan, they have to do right by them and say, hey, just because you see us testing them ahead of time, this will ultimately help their lifestyles and help they able run their lives forward. So when we talked to the committee, we really had several little points that we went through on detail, and these are just really high level for you all today. We went kind of in the weeds on a lot of this, so I certainly appreciate the questions folks were asking. But really, the way that we're looking to contain costs in general is to manage existing chronic conditions, to reduce the risk for preventable conditions, meet with your Wellness Committee on a regular basis. If our plans that we put together today and the next few months don't work, we're going to be, and then we'll be able to change things as we can. Schedule a health fair, we've talked about in the past, having a health fair for our county employees. And so we wanted to have that to be able to raise awareness, raise awareness for your members, but to also give them some idea of what, you know, programs available for them and give them some resources and education outside of just open enrollment. Introducing Naturally Slim, which is a metabolic syndrome program that actually helps people not just with weight loss, but also with reducing their, again, their pre-diabetic or if they have high cholesterol, helps with that. A R O S T E education, A R O S T E is that muscular skeletal program that we talked about with pets having in the past on as well. And then having your employees participate in some pieces, and that would be tobacco cessation and annual physicals. And so what we pulled through together is, so I'll go through kind of the dates first and then we'll talk about the program itself and then, you know, any questions that you all might have. But really, we're looking at, so your earning period on this is likely October 1st of this year to June 30th of next year, as will be the time that they'll be able to earn for their Wellness Incentives. The reward period for anyone that's earned their incentive will be October 1st of 2020 till September 30th of 2021. And if we need to adapt the program, we'll adapt that if needed. And then the Naturally Slim and tobacco cessation, which was two programs that I talked about, we're going to live with when you tell them next slide. We talked about having those to be able to be included during work hours pending super residency and department for approval. So not just someone taking it, but talk to your manager ahead of time if you have kids going to be something that's able to be done during your work hours. For both of those programs, it's less than an hour commitment to leave for those, but the idea was to remove barriers for individuals that might be going through a program to be able to take those at any moment. And so this is really the meat of the Wellness Program right now. I'll take a few moments to talk about questions, what impacts those questions. So really, what we're looking for is for your members to, everyone complete a tobacco affidavit. That means that they attest whether or not they are tobacco users. If they are tobacco users, they need to enroll and participate in to more complete a tobacco cessation course. If they are not, they automatically are qualified for their incentive. If they complete their course, then they, or they're not tobacco user, then they have a $25 a month incentive towards their health benefits. The other piece for your members is also an annual physical. So complete a biometric screening at an annual physical. The cost of, really, what the county costs is going to be the cost of the visits. If I go to my doctor, it's obviously my doctor visit costs. And if I'm, you know, found that I'm needing to have low pressure medication, the cost of those medications. If you complete your annual physical, it's a $25 a month incentive towards your health benefit. For the annual physical, Texas Association of Counties has a company in place partnered that can come onsite to help you demonstrate those. Or you can go to your primary care physician and have your screening stuff there, so people will have choices on that. And again, they'll be able to do that during their incentive earning period. The other piece we want to do is promote Naturally Slim, run a pilot program for 30 individuals. This will be on an application basis, people who complete that application and be accepted into the program. The average cost is about $385 per participant for stage one, which is a 10-day course. And then stage two, which lasts for the rest of the remainder of the year, is $175. Really, the incentive behind that is, it's not a penalty or incentive for individuals, but the folks that go through the program will have a reverse of metabolic syndrome and they'll have health benefits. We'll also look at having a health fair for this year, an education. There's no cost to the county, and Texas Association of Counties will sponsor and help run that, so it shouldn't be additional burden for your employees here. And really, that's the point of that, is to increase benefit education for your employees, not just talk about wellness during open enrollment, but also have that ability for an additional topping point for them during the year. A R O S T E education, that is again the muscular skeletal program that people can run through for soft tissue injuries. We're going to have a lunch and learns and experience A R O S T E days for members that are aware of the program and the benefits of the program. It's no cost to the county to have those programs run through. They're just a claim when people have treatments. And A R O S T E will sponsor lunch and learns, they'll sponsoring onsite events that they do. The idea behind that is lower muscular skeletal spend, and it actually will reduce the amount of injury or surgeries and imaging that you have, as well as medications, the medications that you're treating through the program. And then last, what's not least, is department head education. It's always important for us, when we talk about wellness programs, to have the ability to have leadership understand and know how the programs work and have them on board as well, letting them know, hey, can you talk to your employees about this to understand the importance behind the program that private counties Wellness Committee has put together? So really, it's going to have a benefit roadshow to go to different department heads to give them more understanding about all the programs that are available, so if they have a member that maybe has some back issues, they can suggest to them, maybe like A R O S T E, try A R O S T E. No cost to the county, it's just a time commitment only, but it really does provide tools and leadership, tools for leadership to help them with education for members. So I will pause, because there's a ton of information pretty quick for you and any questions I have.
I was very excited when we, well, back then, to do this presentation, because wellness is something that I think we all need to be aware and cognizant of. I recall a witness to that. I recall my last years at Pantag's, because Pantag's had an annual physical that was required, that was deployed out there. But I felt great. I was, couldn't do that, didn't have any issues with words at all, but I went to my physical and they detected a string of stress tests, and I had seven, and I, they had some concerns, so I did the, what do you call it?
The J G U N.
Yeah, no.
One of those ones that will.
The, the wire.
The monitoring, yeah.
Yeah. And they found out it was 70% blockage. So I ended up getting three stents in that time. I felt great. I didn't have any issues at all. And I've talked to a number of people since that time, and they have experienced some of the same things. You don't, you don't really know a lot of times the condition, because maybe you're used to it and it's going along the flow. So I'm excited about what is being offered right now, because these are some things that we all need to be cognizant of and thank everybody else. It's like preventative maintenance, and you have it in your automobile, in your infrastructure, in your business, why not your body? So being offered TAC, and I think the county is well, allowed to be, look at this and be a participant for the employees, because we just want to know and to have a more healthier workforce, and you've got a more vibrant working, those are where people are looking at.
And we found that, on average, when I look across my office, if folks don't have a Wellness Program in place with either incentives or penalties, less than 30% of the population will get their physicals on the basis. And of that, if I got your age-appropriate, gender-appropriate screening, those numbers even drop further. Because people, you know, again, to your point, you feel fine, I'm getting the records out, or I feel like, hey, and then you go in and you find something, and then for you, it's a good news story. And so again, the idea behind this, like I said, is if the requirement for employees are, we ask them to do this, make it an incentive, then hopefully they can catch those things ahead of time and then not have catastrophic happen and then help overall over your cost that can, from their perspective, you know, you having a heart attack would have a much different outcome than having three stents.
Your Naturally Slim program, 30 participants, how are they?
So we would have an application process that we're doing through Texas Association of Counties. They will receive the applications and select those based off of the needs of those individuals. So, you know, someone's more of a higher risk would be accepted for the program versus someone in lower risk. And at the program, at the end of those 30 participants, we decide that we want to run another program with additional participants, we can do that. I think the idea behind this initially was start a trial program for folks that might be at highest need, see the outcomes of that, and then select additional to be needed to come there.
How are the outcomes measured?
The outcomes are measured based off of either weight loss or opt-out, but if they're off medications and they were on the wire, there's specific measures that they have. The reason why we have 30 as a number is once we have 30 participants, we have better reporting that you can get, because if you have less than 30, you have some PHI system, personal health information rules that can go around that. So 30 is the number, meaning you are more able to have good reporting on that, but it's going to be based on, again, weight loss, if you come off medications, those types of things.
I think 385, is that paid upfront?
It's paid, run through the claim. So it'll run through, it'll actually be a weekly, and you can, right, we have, so every week that you have a person participate, then you'll end up paying the $30 a week that it is when they participate. So if they don't participate, then it's.
Yeah, upfront payment, and somebody just blow up the program while wasted.
Yeah, if they don't participate during the week, there's no charge.
Education is probably the first, you know, anything to learn about professional project. Talk to people about the health fair of the county that throughout the state are engaging and having.
Yeah, and Shere, do you want to come with the topic? Sorry, I was just ready to talk about TAC, because you do practice specifically, how she works the health fairs. So what happens is I've created a health fair checklist, so the person that is appointed to run the health fair will be the non-site person, I mean, until I have those people, or I have a checklist of those groups to make sure they have, you know, within your scope, it's not possible that they don't need money. So I would, you know, trying to make sure that the location is large enough, so the nurse help coming in for your projects for the county. So we have a sign-up sheet, I have a little bar that they'll take around, having those who do that, who's operated before, and we have the trade for starters, how many, we have a little bar, if they can even stand, or give a sticker and then for additional prizes.
Can you give an idea of what kind of people would participate, or what organizations would participate?
Yeah, so every employee would be eligible to attend, and they would want to be able to win a prize. But I would have dinner in front of you, that A R O S T E, that, for the articles, we're going to be providing at that time. You could hit, or if they want some, so making it part of the annual physical, so a capital is there, 30 people to be seen, you can give it a different time. So any of your employees will be able to come, and that's everyone who wants to go.
Is this an all-day event, like two days?
It, the time is up to the county. So if you say you want two hours, do we give two hours? If you say you want four hours, you're not going to.
We definitely have the space, don't we?
Yeah. So whatever time limit that you want it after work.
I think they talked about during the committee that I would want two days' worth of pieces, and we're trying to figure out the hours of those, but two days.
Because of the shift work.
Exactly.
And there's any work with, effectively, with pressure takes, tennis.
So biometric screening for the catapult is included for that, which is a virus coming in with the blood work. The catapult is a company that promotes permanent medicine. So they have this special machine that they always love to run, that they work with now, they're the only ones who have it. And you can, you can, and they stick you a couple of, and it will give you all the data that you need, that you can only, you can draw, you can have a look screen. So they're free for you. So they will come in and do that for the county. I could also see if the person that works with them, they'll see it like a hundred people in the C V S, that we will do at no cost, you want to do the fight.
It's amazing to have those groups, things where the technology's really advanced. I went to one time, and I was going to share a foundation that I was experiencing with the clinicians, and took that as, and, you know, oddly enough, that they know exactly what was going on in my life, so I would do that.
Yeah, the other beautiful thing about catapult is that when they do the biometric screening, they're able to prefer, because they're looking into who's responsible for you. So if you have one of those people that, to me, that hasn't ever known that they had a diagnosis, their doctor will give treatment, and if they came in and their levels were high, the doctor can come to make sure they're compliant.
And if they don't have a doctor, they can have assistance at that time. So I've never been to a doctor, I'm diagnosed with high cholesterol and high blood pressure. The catapult person can say, okay, Julie, there's a primary care physician that's accepting new patients, let's go ahead and give you that information, so you can set up an appointment and take these results, so you have in front of you, to your doctor and see if they can, you know, get you on medication or figure out what your best path of care is.
That's actually promotes less men and more women, so laxifies physical fitness and becoming active and caring about your health and your health and ways to make that in a way.
Shere, what other types of vendors might be present at the.
So anyone local that has, let's say you have a gym, and the county doesn't run, they have a gym membership program, there were some gyms that were off. have a gym membership program, there were some gyms that were offered, this kind of raised to have employees, but say a county employee lives in an area that doesn't have a gym and they want to know where they can go periodically. We have people who do acupuncture, as long as there be all kinds of people when they hear you're having a health fair, they want to come. So I've had, I did Women Hood County, I don't know if you know where that is, but Hood County has about five hundred employees and, or actually they don't even have a hundred employees, they have like five hundred people show up to this health fair and they had like to be pretty good, the entire area was packed out and it was pretty awesome.
Yeah.
My next question doesn't have anything to do with this exact, but it's the high claims that we're seeing here are part of, are caused by babies and they, it seems like no larger than our population is, it's high, we're having a high percentage. Is that, what's causing that? Is it because they're not getting pre-dated pairs or because they're too old to have kids?
There's a couple of things actually probably that, and I share things across the book of my entire book of business. In fact, I have a school district that I work with that had a nineteen million dollar and nine million dollar baby last year and it was based off just the cost of care. So, and I've seen this across the world, those are, those are kind of anomalies, it felt like just because they were so expensive, but I've definitely seen a rise across my entire book of business with the cost of care. And that really just has to pay with what's being charged at the time. I don't necessarily know that it's specifically to you, but I think it's just nationwide, it's more expensive. There are some healthy baby programs that people can run through. I don't necessarily know there's a ton of value in those, most folks are going and getting their appropriate care, it's just I think that once you have a child that has something catastrophic going on with them, the longer they stay in the hospital, the more stuff that they get, you know, and there's some things that might be able to prevent it, you know, if they get the appropriate care that they need during the pregnancy, but some things are just a way of, it's just going. The idea behind this, I mean, again, if we can hopefully prevent a heart attack or two or maybe someone having a transplant due to diabetes or something along those lines, hopefully we can help offset the costs of those things that we can't prevent, so accidents or you're going to kill babies or anything along those lines. We're never going to be able to reverse trend, but if we can at least fix some things we can fix, then hopefully it can slow down the trend.
So I guess my last question, my question is, is there any, much is there a effect towards the cost for the county? Have you seen the funding or anything that would be.
So, so there's two things. So as far as the cost in county, when you start having folks go in and getting their preventive screenings, you'll definitely see an uptick in what your, your conditional costs are because people are going to go in and realize for the first time they have either prediabetes or that they have cholesterol, high cholesterol, things like that. So you're going to have the cost of the visit and the cost of medications that people might not have been on before. So you'll see enough to go back for the first year or so. As far as additional cost to that, I mean, that's really what your, your big cost is going to be kind of to start off with. Long term, you'll start seeing those larger things tick down, so that's really what we're looking at in that book of all.
Thank you.
And I just want to point out too, your wellness committee was very engaged and they had a lot of questions with me and spent some time on this, and so I certainly appreciate allowing us to spend time with them and the thoughtful conversation they had around this. I know that when we look at this, when people give a little theory about wellness programs in general in those lines, but the idea is in the long term to help folks as much as we can, as much as possible and, you know, I think to get there is a little bit of time, but if we're going to have some great options, I'm excited for this to come out.
Right, I was very engaged in the committee.
Who else on the committee?
Commissioner Ron Wade Overstreet, Monica Hughes, County Clerk Lisa Hinaosse, County Clerk Liz Cresson, Kim Parsons, Melan Huntley, George Samples, Brad Early and Sherry Adler, Taylor and myself. Liz Cresson.
Are you already?
Any action is concerned here?
No, we'll just need to take it to the administration, we're sending where it gets started.
Is there any action there?
Is there any action necessary? You want to prove it now or you want to get like?
What's the next step?
To, to, to improve the wellness strategy.
And minus, that's, yes, ma'am.
I will so move, we move to approve the wellness program, President. And to move, any.
Number six, tax office to consider an act upon tax refunds for overpaying taxes. Sure, there's quite a few, but unusual, huh? That'll.
Move we approve the four, refund, what was saying, the tax.
Thank you, Sherry. The next one is about you, Director, you're on the continuing education question, number one, one eighteen, we call it one eighteen. Number eight, we're going to skip all of that and get some people out. Number nine, tiers, number two, to hear a report from Andy Freeman on the tiers two regarding this approval of the fifty percent property tax rebate in ten years, seven, seven to seventy-five, and we're still taking that.
So today is to discuss what we are first incentive awarded to the tier two, these gateways. So, on December twentieth, Board Directors approved incentive request for seven, seven to seventy-five, here state forty, to the project, it's more a hotel, home suites by Hilton, three hotel, it's a seventy-five thousand square foot facility on two point six acres of land, it's four stories, under twenty-three suites, these are the more long-term suites that have full kitchen, backwaters, dishwashers included, but also a business center and outdoor patio, workout room and swim pool, a condo, it would be pocketed. The total construction is over nine million dollars and will create twenty-five full-time jobs. As far as the request, the consideration that the tiers are too board had, the developer is for sixty-six acre LLC, represent might be bought, the held, he's also here today, he had questions, but our request was getting it to build inside the tiers, he was also considering another location closer to the airport that might have been for a magnificently managed location for him. So that was one criteria that was part of the consideration, but also part of the discussion with the tiers board included in the agreement or requirement, if there's a gap in the site plan, you'll see it's being built, proposed being built next to the Hampton Inn and there's a gap of about three hundred feet or so between the Big Texan and the home suites that's being proposed. And part of the agreement is going to require off streets, streetscape, hard sidewalks, slide trees, those sorts of things to kind of fill the gap there because what he's found out of those sites out there, folks walking up and down against the Big Texan from the hotels and other areas, so as part of this incentive request, some of those funds go toward that project as far as filling in that gap until future development occurs. The incentive itself is a fifty percent property tax rebate of the increments over ten years. It's also got conditions in there as far as once council approves it after they consider it, which is on the agenda for tomorrow, you have six months to get the building permit and after issues with the building permit, you would have two years to get certain occupancy. So there's a timeline to get these incentives and then as well as this streetscape requirement. So as far as the estimate of the tax rebate would provide based on our current tax rate structure and the property value on Pratt at about six point seven million, that'd be approximately forty-two thousand a year or four hundred twenty thousand over ten years. So that is the report that we're taking, council tomorrow night, I'm happy to take comments from the physicians to the city council.
And that's pretty much in line with the rebates that we're.
Yes, and again, a little better than what they're trying to get to as far as tiers one, we haven't had tiers number two yet, so tiers one's starting with these lower meters, lower terms, just because the tiers does have certain goals for infrastructure and other apartments out there, so if they were rebating everything, it would have put their goals.
That's a long, typical, like, hotel roadmap.
It is.
Is there any concern with the, 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 the,[1264.12] Saturation of the market. Do you find, can we talk less before that? I think the numbers we're seeing is doesn't seem so. Or it's a case of we're seeing some of our older properties maybe come offline and be replaced by tier ones raising rates. So it's actually continues to see some difference.
You don't see any issue with concern on your part?
Amberlil, I think has ways to go as far as rates. If you look at other cities around the state, they're very, very low. So I think we'll continue to see things. Yeah, I have one of the questions I was going to ask is how this fits in with the goals of your tiers two.
It does. Hotels basically included in the plan, smart projects, I want to say. This will be able to let verse go around this new first project, really new construction since two thousand sixteen, basically.
Alright, thank you. Number ten, family support services fund raise to consider an act upon approval of a SNA license contract with OPI Edge USA for repelling, or rappelling fund raise, hundred million, event.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're going to do it again.
We're going to do it again. We hope so. I came to you guys less than a year ago and wanted to concept of over the edge. Partnering with the Santa Fe Building in Potter County. We had that event in August. It was a success by all measures we've got. We had about fifty people go over the edge safely. Very safely. We had, we grossed about fifty thousand dollars. You know, we've always liked to make more money, but we were very, very happy with the results. I can tell you that the over the edge company that brought the team in was over the moon excited about the hospitality with Mr. Head and his team. They felt like the building was perfect and they go all over the world and they loved our building. We are proposing to do it again with a few modifications, nothing substantial as far as the building goes. We are looking at the date, on a Saturday, June fifteenth. The primary change for you guys would be that we would need to cover the overtime for your staff and that would be our expense. We would be looking for more people to go over the edge. We're proposing a sponsorship where we manage the event just like we did before. You guys manage the building. We handle all the recruitment and the sponsorships. We would like to offer Potter County one slot. We know the judge does not want to go over the edge. But we would like to offer you as presenting sponsor and that's the way we promoted the building last year was as the presenting sponsor. And achieved about twenty-five thousand dollars in publicity. She's here. She's still here. She's here today and can tell you about that event. She's not really rocking the headphones. During the Saturday, one of the events is we can collaborate with the community market. We have sought their permission and agreement to collaborate so that we're not pulling away from the community market. We feel like we could offer a family-friendly event. It won't be during the school day. There are people who couldn't participate during the work weeks who would be able to. We would offer more family activities to, just to draw a bigger crowd and you know, we have to overcome some challenges by not doing the weekdays because we don't have a built-in downtown crowd. But with that community market, we can capture a whole new audience. And once again, we would use the money we raised to help domestic violence and sexual assault survivors, veterans, kids who are at risk, teenagers at risk for suicide, all the twenty-five thousand people we serve each year. And we appreciate you guys.
I think it's a really, really good, good foundation for you guys.
It worked out great.
We're happy we can help and Nicholas is on board or all of his guys being there on a Saturday.
Twice since.
Are there any questions? Any questions?
I move that we allow the over the edge event to benefit the family support services by using the Santa Fe.
Fifteen is the day, fourteen is just set up. Thank you, Joy. Appreciate you.
We volunteer without permission, we don't have to be like. Number eleven, GED program to approve corporation agreement at law college from the page that exists in GED program.
This is really, basically just the information. They're actually providing us another future to have future costs to the county that comes in. In the evening as well, about four times. Worked out really well and they're, they're all playing this. We've got two graduates. The first one I graduated.
Do you need to go somewhere or just?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, number twelve, Potter County Council on the floor to consider an act upon the replacement of graphics on the county.
We have a picture of you being here, which isn't so good, but.
This is the new graphic that I'm presenting. The parent graphics that been happening for the last three, three years and it has been damaged and peeling off. And so I just wanted to bring it to the course. And the parent graphics will be like that. And so I want to be brought to you guys for approval. It'll be a new design and I want to, you know, everybody to be shocked.
So you've already gone through from to do.
Prior to my first graphic, we got everything taken care of. We're going through graphic design. They have an account already with.
Oh, okay.
And it's already set up. I just need to come to you guys and get taken out to get it done. I don't want to be out of vehicle for a few days, but my fellow colleagues are going to get me, keep me around. I got to ride for a few days whilst. Yes, yes, sir.
What's it cost?
This actually way cheaper than my first graphic. So it's going to be five hundred, this particular one. There's going to be an hourly rate of sixty-five, and they're going to pay about an hour. But he has to remove the current graphics and replace them.
Do you have this money here?
My buddy, yes, I do. No additional money, thank you.
I move to approve the request for replacement of graphic on county vehicles.
Motion second, I'm prepared. Thank you, Sherri. Number thirteen, taser certification. We hear a report on county, no civil law weapons, eight-year taser. I've got a lot of work to do, so I'm serious.
This is just to let you know that we've helped with the finances we saw I got set up last year. The taser, the research body to do. The sheets that I gave you, it shows all about the people and when they were training. There's three people that are tasering people from up on the side. We have one that she was out of town. Research, but the other two are reserves. They're just kind of hard to get into the training. And then the fourth one down there is one that.
Hospital de involved, sending his certification.
So what question that it goes to the certification of, this is the, the halter. What is, what do they, what's the process?
It's really, it's really, this is two outer classes. They go in and they have to shoot two, two heartbreakers and two. Heartboard cutout, basically. We try to make it a little different each year, each year. Last year, we did a really big scenario where we actually be able to go in. We had, we put them in with two officers and it was, it could have been down their force or it could have been just using the tape. So it was kind of a little different scenario. We have some, two of the body suits where you can actually shoot the person in. We pull a warm bin when it's springtime or in summer, so it's a bit of a cold one.
So we put all the commissioners.
Taking it out, we're going to go without the suit in the experience, the event. With the suit, they don't.
Why not?
It's a training because I'm getting shot about ten times and watching that, bend around that.
Once is enough, that's what I'm saying. They need to experience.
Now, we're guys, because they, when they, when they do get, when they go through the initial, they do get something.
I took your system.
People missed that.
People were paying, it made me do it.
Not enough money, I understand. It's a lot of carry weight.
No way. Okay, thank you, sir. Number fourteen, school choice week to recognize January twenty through twenty-six, twenty nineteen as school choice week in Potter County. This is just a recognition from someone. I asked them to do this. I hate everyone who's from. They asked us about a month ago and we said we could do this, so. Oh, no, they just said to me and I said, okay, I'll do it. I had read it. Of course.
All it's saying is that. That they're saying that people have a choice, you know, whether they go to a public school or private school or whatever. Supporting high or high-quality education, about where you choose. I wanted to give everybody an understanding. We approve the resolution recognizing January twenty through twenty-six, twenty nineteen as school choice week.
Number fifteen, Potter County bail bond board to consider an act upon the appointment of Judge Walwever, County attorney general, to serve in the Potter County bail bond board. Something we do every year. We have the county clerk judge on bail bond board against his term. So next year we.
I move we approve this by the judge Walwever, county clerk judge, county attorney general, to serve our county bail bond board. So I can just.
Motion second, I'm prepared. Number sixteen, formal proposal number one one three five dash one six, renewal of jail rules to consider an act upon the renewal. The formal proposal number one one three five dash one six, the five-star version services including an increase of one one zero two six percent per year. Has allowed the proposal effective date, February eleven twenty nineteen through February ten twenty. It's not going to share, or it's only going to add two cents from ninety-five cents to ninety-seven cents. Is that correct? I call that a whole bill. It's not very.
Adds up pretty quickly.
I guess it does. Actually, it's like sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars a day.
But it is cheaper than anybody else in the world. I can remember the last time we had a proposal.
Start saying overtime.
If we keep the populations we've been having, we're going to be about fifteen thousand over budget this increase.
Let's put them on that wellness, like sleep, face, spin.
Number sixteen.
I'm making a motion that the proposal eleven thirty-five dash sixteen, where the whole channel was asked, presented by the judge.
Women autonomous to consider an act upon the calling of the women's grocery to transfer a dollar. Does it help?
Yes.
The fragment operator is replacing a period of service effective January second twenty nineteen.
I move we approve the statement as presented.
Potter County Project, Nicholas, we have anything to do with that?
I probably should. Architects and senior filing voice is kind of in the middle. A little higher than we thought. Probably just to clear the air till we're open, so. I've, I've let Curie see, look at it. I'm going to help Kim look at it, just make sure I'm bringing more of that one there. You know, all the ones we've been talking about.
So we're higher.
Ten thousand higher. It looks like a charge has been doubled by accident. But.
What does that mean?
That's why that hasn't been paid yet and our four G's are both buildings. So we're going to see. What do you, eleven, twelve, twelve walkers, I guess, is what we call them. So we have actively thirty-seven four G's or so on this plane. As long as the four G's active and we've caught it and reported it, I can't go so crazy here so often.
Sure, it's been a whole year since you've been out there, huh?
A year, almost.
Almost a whole year.
Pretty close. Pretty good.
Okay, so you think it's a time of.
I really think it is. I talked to Larry and he's one of these people paying.
So do we have a date and a time on tomorrow's meeting with the architect as far as issue? Was there a specific time on that?
Nine, nine o'clock.
It's at nine AM, seven four.
Seven four.
Is that it? Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you, sir.
I think it's you two.
I'm going.
And I was just wanting to make sure that I informed marriage that I'm going to be.
I wasn't going to go if I had, you know, help, but I'm going to have to talk tomorrow. Put my meds. Okay, good. So number nineteen, jail report. We have five hundred and fifty-three people in our jail. Eighty-six of those are females. None of those are shift out. They're the ones there. Eighty-four percent unbalanced, eleven percent.
We have one that's by a rescue on the night of the eighth. One of the volunteers coming over to get something to eat. So where it's at right now is I formed Faraday Group, our insurance company, who own that. Maybe I'm willing to give back a investment.
How do you buy into a building?
It was nineteen ninety-four, four, pick up.
Alright. Okay, we're going to go back to number eight, closing meeting to convene a closing meeting for student access. We have a pro section five five one, seven one, round super class of council regarding taking a hundred places location. It is two weeks ago as we said. We'll be right back. Okay, we are back. It's ten twelve. No action was taken. And let's move on to the very executive session. Ten items for next time. If anybody can think of. Nothing? Okay, there's nothing else. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.